Accepting.
I'll support it.
Anybody opposed to that? The approval of the October treasurer's report?
The only thing I have as far as the treasurer's report, we do have the, the board members do have your copy of the finalized audit. We have a couple tiny cleanup items to work out with the auditors yet, but the F-65 has already been filed. Everybody has a completed copy of the audit and so we should, this is yours, we should be all set with this for the prior year, 17, 18. The only other thing I have is from a treasurer's stand, two things actually. So, from the treasurer's standpoint, the final numbers that have been handed over to the county for the sewer assess, or for the special assessments on the winter tax roll is as follows. As follows, it's something I already paid. Here we are. Okay, so for sewer debt, it's going to be $2,997. Sewer use is going to be $31,744. Garbage is going to be $119,750 and 40 cents.
$119,740.
Fifty, forty. Lawn mowing administrative fees are going to be $1,120. Lawn mowing reimbursement is $425. And street lighting is going to be $13,509. That dollar amount does not include the write-off that we're going to be responsible for, for the property in town that is now under ownership of the Huron County Treasurer because of that taxes. The requirement is that we have to write that dollar amount off as a loss. That dollar amount is going to be $691. That auction, I think, comes up this month if it hasn't already occurred. I don't know if it's being sold. It's at the second level auction. It didn't sell at the first one. That's the one on First Street down here.
There you go, Adam.
What's that?
When you asked me about one.
Yeah, the same one's gone. It showed up like two days after the auction.
The auction's already happened then?
Yeah, the auction already happened.
One time.
When is it coming up again?
I think it's this month, October.
It is October, it's 201.
Yeah.
Usually it's October.
It is October. I think that's, that's the, the second, you know, open, I don't know if there's, I think the minimum bid might be a hundred dollars, but there is an outstanding sewer assessment debt on that one, so a couple people that ask, that deterred them because they'd have to pay for that. One of the other financial things that I want to kind of go over is we are, maybe I'll wait until fire report because I kind of need that, just talk about this, so I'll wait until then on that piece, but you do need a motion on the minute, or on the report.
I make the motion to accept your report.
Your support to that?
I'll support it.
Any questions, Adam? Everybody approve of that? Yeah. Okay, we've got to approve the bill.
Dumpster cleanup wasn't that much, huh? It's a little dumpster.
Need to clean it up right now.
What that's all about, well, if they decide to take it back and clean it up and give it back, what are they doing? I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I asked what she didn't know.
I know I got three calls on it already.
Somebody had a plan here.
Our dumpster, yeah?
Yeah, they replaced it with this little tiny thing.
Oh, my God.
Is it a little, is it a little green?
They need one twice as big.
Yeah, the one we had was.
Yeah, they went the wrong way.
Yeah, they went the wrong way is right. So, we got to, I'm going to see if it was just a temporary thing that they needed it back or whatever, but it can't stay that small, obviously. I'll make a.
Probably cemetery. That's where it's come out of.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I'll second.
Anybody opposed to that? Let's carry.
It was a pretty quiet month. There were some rumors about that person that died at the trailer park. It wasn't a homicide. Looks to be mostly alcohol related. So, you got the bid on new, on the new pickup from Moore Ford in Carroll, they have a state contract. It's $34,330 and the add-ons is $2,075 for a total of $36,405. That's about 1,800 or so higher than the Explorer. And then it's a couple thousand cheaper than a Tahoe, so it's kind of in the middle. It does come with a five-year warranty and it comes with a six-cylinder engine that, that turbocharged engine, it'll save us a lot of money in gas. I talked to the guy in, uh, Fairgrove. He does all the lights for all the police departments in this area. That way we don't have to go to Detroit. And he said everything would switch over except the divider between the back seat and the front seat. He said because of the diameters inside the truck are different. A lot of stuff we don't need. Tow package, we've never used on this one. We never, we never used half of the stuff, so we really don't need a lot of it.
Does the guy come with a name?
Oh, yeah. It's the only business.
I can get it for you if you need it.
Yeah, I can get it. But he called me, actually Moore, Moore called him than he called me. And he said he looked it up and looked up the diameter, so you know, the, everything on the truck, and he says that, uh, everything will switch, everything will switch over except the divider, but, he said he wants to come out and measure it, but he's felt positive that it'll all work, which I can see is lights and stuff, like the bar lights adjustable, you know?
So, that, that would be in addition to this cost, though?
Yeah.
Okay, so he'd have to get us a quote too, so we'd have a full comprehensive view of it?
Well, and it, it's really hard for him to do that. We tried doing that last time, remember, at that place in Detroit, and they couldn't do it because they don't know what they need and, so I, I mean, I can guess, ask them to give us a ballpark estimate. Because I don't know how, I don't know Ford comes pre-wired like the Dodge did. I did call the Chevrolet place here in Pigeon, asked them for a quote on a Dodge, so I wanted to see, compare apples with apples, but of course they never called me back, and they called me back last time. I had to go to the people in Detroit and then they called me back. So, I don't think McCormick's real interested in purchasing police vehicles.
How much is that tow package?
It's on your thing there.
It's quite a bit.
Yeah. The tow package, trailer tow package is $1,000, and a tow package with trailer brake controls $1,270.
See, we've never used it.
And that's not included in the extras you got at the bottom.
No, I think we buy a trailer, I think we buy a.
Correct. If you look, there's a check mark on the extra.
The only thing is they're, they're beefed up for it. You know, the trailer package. But when you go to, when you go to sell it, you know, you're going to get a little more for it. That's what I was thinking.
Well, that's up to you guys. I just put it bare necessities.
Yeah.
Didn't you have to get a special wiring harness for this?
No.
For this one here?
It came, it came with the wiring harness. It's sitting in the center of, between the two front seats. Dodge, this one should be the same way, when, because you order a police package, they're already pre-wired for all your lights. But I just don't think that place in Detroit, and when I don't understand it either, because they, they handled everybody, Detroit, the state police, everybody, but they sure messed this one up.
Hey, Jason. Jason comes to mind. Fairgrove.
I know Tim and his dad, they do all the ambulances, police cars for Carroll, all the way to Lake Lexington. So, you guys asked me to get a bid, I got one.
What are we going to do with this one? Would they trade it in on anything? Will they take it as trade-in or?
No.
I don't know if they can, because you're buying under a state bid.
Don't think so.
Something in my mind's eye says that was the situation last time. It was because it's equipped as a, as a police car. It's not something that takes.
Well, that's because we, yeah, we wanted to get rid of all the lights and everything.
Do you think any, could you talk to Kelly and ask him if he had any, would be willing to give us anything for it, for his department?
Yeah, but we're going to be stripping all the lights and everything off it.
Well, I know, but he still might be willing to re-equip it.
I'll talk to him. It's got 80,000 miles.
I mean, even if they used it for, you know, a department.
Marine patrol or so.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to him.
They couldn't take it to like B and K auction?
Yeah, you can sell it at auction.
Sheriff, I mean, sheriff does that all the time.
I'd say, I've seen sheriff cars sold.
You can take bits for them or you can outright sell it as a vehicle auction.
But that's why I say, would they offer you a trade-in?
That one outside of Banaxer.
Yeah, I don't think you can trade them in. You're buying a vehicle under a state bid.
I understand, but, but how can you sell it then?
You can sell it at auction, but the dealership, I don't know how they do their paperwork.
Well, dealership, when's the last time you seen a cop car sitting at a dealership?
Oh, I understand that, oh, but it's.
They send it off to auction.
Yeah, they send the stuff off.
I mean, we, the last time we sold it to another department that could use it, right? So, that's why I was thinking of the county and.
Hey, they're buying a brand-new Tahoe.
You know?
That's top money there.
You knew they could bring a Tahoe.
Unionville, they already ordered it, just waiting on it.
Are they the ones that brought our last one?
Yeah. By Ford's been working on it.
I've heard nothing good about the Tahoe.
I mean, if we knew that we had a buyer for the other one, obviously that would make a difference financially as a treasurer here for me.
Well, you're not going to.
There's not going to be any money coming.
Sell it at auction. Only you got to strip off is the, the, what's it, Fairhaven Township Police, heat gun, peel that off. See, I don't know, like the mirrors have lights built right in the mirrors.
Just disconnect them probably. I think you just better get some more information out before we do anything.
Okay. I mean, I mean, I don't know, I know you can't trade them in. I've never heard of trading.
We're just guessing now, so.
Yeah, I don't, I think you're right too, Skip. I think that's what I remember the last time around, but I can't make, you know, my old mind can't remember for certain if that's the case, but, yeah, like he said, when's the last time you ever seen a trade-in?
Yeah.
Well, like she said, you would just sell, put, push it off to auction.
Well, that ain't giving nothing for it.
Okay. No, I just don't know if another department would be willing to give us a little bit more than the trade-in fee.
If they did, we couldn't strip it.
Eighty gra, 80,000 miles, no offense, on a pickup truck is nothing. How many people here sell their pickups when it gets to 80 grand? I don't.
Yeah, we've been having a lot of problems since 30,000.
300,000, right?
To disclose that.
Why, no, you have to keep running it all the time.
Yeah.
For someone to buy that as a regular.
We might not be able to sell it.
You don't think it's that much wear and tear on it?
No.
That may be a good deal.
Couldn't use it in the township or something? Paul leaves?
Remember he tested it at mine.
Well, only because of his gear. Other than that, but the next person that owns it can use it as a real pickup.
What about the fire department?
That's some kind of battery system.
Fire rescue truck? You got anything else, Skip?
So, we're going to table this until.
Now you're not, now you're staying.
Oh, no, I didn't say for me, I said chief's car.
So, we're going to table this one more month.
Yeah.
I'm going to worry. I got a jumper box, I always get it started.
You got anything else, Skip?
No.
Okay, Roger?
We had a, while you're down last night burning the property next to Bay Shore Marina, that was it for the month. Air packs. I got a call from the vice president of Apollo about a week ago sincerely apologizing for the delay. They misplaced one of the seven demo packs that we were supposed to get, so she went and ordered a brand spanking new one for us at no extra charge. It's in the same package. So, they're waiting for that and the seven additional air bottles. That's the delay. That's what's going on.
Okay, so it's not coming next week or anything?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay.
She didn't give me a when, but.
110% off.
Call her, I'll give you a phone number.
All right, so from a financial standpoint, I, I did submit the, the contract that we, for the application for credit. They sent me back the contract that they're going to want signed once we, of course, receive it. We got confirmation, everything's in good working order, they done the training and everything that they were included in the, in the price. I sent the contract to the attorney to be reviewed. Our, our attorney came back with a couple section of the contract that he wasn't, he didn't really care for in the financial contract. He said, "I review the report." I have reviewed the proposed contract between the township and Republic First National for financing of the fire department's new equipment. I would suggest the following changes. Two sections he would like to eliminate. And then I also wanted to make sure that in there they had talked about not having a prepaid penalty. And I couldn't see that in their lingo. Their lingo is really, was really lawyerish, right? There's no layman's terms in this, this finance contract, which always makes me nervous, right? If you can't read it yourself. And he also wanted, in that, he said there was specifically nothing in there that said anything about a payoff of the contract, no such penalty language is included in this contract. He gave a section number that allows us to pay off the balance due to, due according to the payment schedule, but it would require 30 days' notice to exercise this option and would not allow the township to make any partial prepayments towards the option. So, that's kind of different than what we've got our administrative and our finance and our stephanies and everybody's saying, right? So, I sent that over to them. Their attorney came back and said, "Hey, yeah, we are deleting this section and no, we can't agree to that section, and here's what we can do." So, I have an attorney against an attorney and a very small ticket item, really. It's only, it's less than $40,000. This isn't huge money on any, when it comes to something this scale. If I am, so that made me think, is, are we maybe missing an opportunity here? So, would, would the board be of any problem with me reaching out to like a local lender, like Bayport State Bank? They usually do five-year loans. I did make a quick call to the lending department, trying to get in the right hands and get them to evaluate it, but he did say they can do the semi-annual annual payments. They have no problems with that. They also have no problem with a five-year term, which is what they prefer, Bayport. Haven't heard an interest rate as of yet, but if it's a competitive and they're able to meet the, what we need on this, on this financing, do you guys have any problems with us maybe pursuing the loan with them instead of having an attorney against attorney and not have?
I'd see if you can do it locally.
Yeah, we don't.
Absolutely.
Our own, our own, keep our own businesses running, right? And there's really not, you know, like we talked about, there's, this isn't a long-term loan by any means, and it's a, it's really a small ticket item in the bigger scheme of things, so if I could have somebody, you know, I don't know.
I'll make a motion that if we can reach out to one of our local banks to do the financial obligation on that, to go ahead and do it.
I'll support it.
Okay, what I'll do is make sure too, that it's, you know, it's a competitive rate, you know, it's not going to, you know, give us any hardships, but at the same time, by the time I get these two to agree, I might have more into it than the interest rate bumps up a half a percent.
Costs you more than having to pay the lawyer.
I know, right?
Any questions on that? Anybody opposed to that?
No.
Gary.
I have one more item. One of my assistant chiefs, Mike Aisham, is showing interest in taking the chief's position when I retire, so I'm going to start working with him right away for a little nice transition. I think he'll do good.
Have you guys voted on that yet or?
No, we've just been talking, but nobody's come to me or called me going, "Hey, I want to do this."
Oh, I understand that, but I mean.
Oh, no, no, that comes in December, you know.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, you're going to groom this fellow than the guys say, "Hey, I don't want him."
They can't.
Right.
Because it's a recommendation.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And they approve the chief, so.
And we are going to, you know, your word as a, the pre-existing chief is really kind of key to this, right? Because you've really done a good job and you know what that job requires, Roger, so your opinion matters in my world.
Right. Appreciate that. That's all I have.
So, you have?
Yep.
Cemetery?
Uh, we had some trees cut down.
We got the bill for that going out this month.
Yeah, you got it, yeah. He was out there like the next day, I crazy woke up. Got it down, cleaned up.
We, I set up some committees and Jill's going to be working with you.
Oh, okay.
Sam's going to teach me some stuff.
Dennis, you're going to, you're going to work with Suzie.
Okay.
And I guess I'll probably be working with the fire department. Patty said she can get by it all. Is that all right with everybody?
The primary committee that you're going to be on with me, if you're on with me, if I get, don't have the cemetery anymore, is going to be sewer.
Sewer.
Yeah, yeah, you're on the Suzie.
So, I'll handle guys like him.
We're still trying to get him all the right answers, but I got to get into the ordinance, I guess.
Do we need a motion now then?
Yeah, the changing committees.
He jumped right in on cemetery with us, so I got to figure out if this is even in the right place to set up the committees. But that's fine. Horn's making a motion that he's setting up committees to help divert some of the work away from.
Changing the committees, so basically we're changing. So, Suzie's no longer on cemetery, that's going to be transferred to Jill.
But do we need a motion to do this?
I think so.
Motion made by Horn. Seconded.
By me, I'll second it.
Jill goes to cemetery, Dennis goes to sewer, Horn has roads and fire and I have law.
Anybody opposed to that? Gary. You don't think I got on road, you got anything on roads, Patty? The only thing I got on it is Finn and Feather Road there, them guys want speed limit signs. They said they're cruising down there full tilt.
Oh, Decole Road.
Decole Road, yeah. And, and we'll get on that tree. I'm going to have him over here, he's supposed to come over and see me tomorrow, so. I'll be home if you need to know anything.
Did they get your lights fixed? Because I did submit a.
The one that broke my house is fixed, but there's still one down the street that's not.
It goes on all the time.
I reported three of them, how can, how can they get one and not the other?
I don't know. Have they ever checked to getting LED lights too? I mean, that, you would save a lot of money.
I know.
Run your electric though.
No, we haven't. I mean, it's been, it's a, it's a thing that I've got on my desk as far as, there's even grants, I think, available.
When I first got on, I asked them, I talked to DTE, and they said that we were on the list, but don't know where on the list.
What one?
So, what, what did I tell you?
Well, the good news is, is right, that they're in town working. Did you see all of the old toothpick poles getting replaced and all the pole transfers they're doing?
Oh, I thought they were.
And the upgrades?
Yeah, they are.
They're, they're pretty much done with that, but they're also done a lot of transformer upgrades, I think.
Well, add in some lights and have them climb up there and change the valves and stuff.
I'm excited because, yeah, because before, remember I told you, they didn't even know Orstree was built yet, according to their original maps. So, yeah, they're at least paying attention to the community. The power outages here is crazy, right? It's crazy.
The plus, if I might add, for instance, last night we had the wire down there, with all these smart meters they have installed now.
Okay.
They know now, when a bunch of those go out, they know there's a big problem. Before I had a chance to call dispatch back on the radio, Edison was there.
Well, that's because I called them yesterday afternoon, because.
Thanks, Adam.
Behind my house, I just happened, I went for a walk and behind lefties there in the power line, there was a tree fell and it was on the one wire. It didn't break nothing, but I mean, the, the wire was hanging down probably 12 foot. That was at like 4:30 or something.
This was later, I don't remember the time.
I don't know how long it took them to cut it down.
What time did we go out last night, did you remember?
About 8:30.
8:30?
About 9:00.
9:00? But I was surprised to see him.
Yeah, I don't know how long it took them down there, but he showed up at my house at like 4:30, 5 o'clock, I think.
The streets are just going to continue to cause problems.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to be in it for a long time.
For the whole community, actually, it's the whole county being impacted, but.
Did that leave anything? Okay, it's all a dead ashtray.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll go to Halloween times, came this last year.
Just a reminder, we did it last month.
Need two for double site.
You came that Patty, I thought last year was.
Isn't actually on the 31st, I don't have kids at home anymore.
Is it, is it 5:30 to 7:30?
5:30 to 7:30.
Our minutes say 5 to 7.
Oh.
5:00.
Is it 5:00? 5:00 to 7:30, okay. It was a typo, sorry.
5:00.
Sorry.
Okay. You have any new business?
Thin-skinned.
No, the old business is keeping us busy enough.
All right. Any correspondence?
We had one letter of an open meeting act last night from Seabream Township on a master plan, meeting that they had, but it was for last night, so we missed the meeting. Because the letter didn't come till like a week or so ago.
What would that, what would that do for us? What would we do?
If we would just have been in on their master plan, we share boundary lines with Seabream Township, so if any of their master plan would have included anything, say on Kilmanah Road, out that way, we would have the other half of Kilmanah Road. So, they, as a courtesy, they just sent us an invitation to their master plan meeting, but we got it like a week ago and the meeting was last week, so.
Hold on a minute, or something won't. Remind me if I have.
Should we ruin that quick, or she's fast?
They're doing so well for Seabream, aren't they? They're keeping all the contaminated soil and.
We were going to, we were going to turn before you get back.
Oh, really? I was quick that one night. So, there was another meeting that was held this month that was primarily to the assessors, and it really does apply to the assessors, on Monday, October 8th. This kind of showed up on my desk. I didn't actually get this invitation until after the meeting had already occurred, so. But there is some concern from Val and the other assessors. There is a new law that is being proposed. At this point, it's just a proposal, and everybody is kind of stepping up to the plate and reacting to it. One of the changes is the resolution or what they're trying to, I'm going to summarize this, because this is just the preliminary phases, but they're going to mandate that the assessors have a certain level of certification, which has not, not been a mandate in the past. There's going to be county involvement on the assessing piece of it, meaning they would start to take away some of the assessing responsibilities or ownership of the municipalities and take that to a county level. There is, which of course would take away local government control, right? So that, that becomes an issue for people. Because the county isn't gonna be able to do as good of a job, any, you know, it's kinda like centralizing the responsibility. As maybe Val does here, or whoever does, you know, Lake Township, whoever does Gage Town, they know their own communities. And, um, the government has been trying this for a while, I mean. Schneiderback, when he wanted to try and get municipalities to kinda join forces and eliminate redundancies as far as clerks. And, and treasurers and supervisors.
And Oliver, what if you're a village?
Um, he was, he, I think he was veering away from them a little bit, going more towards the smallest of the entities.
Well, maybe we became a village then.
Yeah, we, the thing with, we talked about that a couple meetings ago, but the problem with becoming incorporated as a village, it usually comes with all kinds of extra taxation. To never, and, uh, most people that were present were like, you know, we don't want that. Um, other than that, I mean, it does.
How could they tax you? I, I got a place in Pigeon, my taxes are cheaper over there, my sewer bill and water bill and everything's cheaper over there.
Oh, is that, man, I wanna know.
That's what I wanna know.
Well, I've got a place in Pigeon and I don't pay any less, I pay way more in my water bill and sewer bill over there.
The motel's just.
We don't have water bill here, we think of sewer.
Right, but, you know what I mean?
But we have, we have such a small amount of people supporting it, that's why we're paying more for sewer.
Yeah. Well, and the sewer is a competitive rate, we can, you know, you can prove that out yourself by just Googling or calling in another municipality, but. There's issues with the sewer, it's getting older, I'm not gonna lie, that's gonna be the next agenda of conversation, but it's not yet there. Um, but we are in a situation where the sewer is starting to, uh, you know, we're year twenty-eight going on twenty-nine years. So it's starting to rear its ugly head and, um, I'm working with, um. Pete over at Almers and we're trying to come up with some data and trying to, you know, really hone in on, on what we're gonna be able to do for the communities.
Call the DEQ, see if we can get it over there.
Go back to sewer. Um, probably isn't gonna happen, but the bottom line is, is that, yeah, that's gonna be a conversation for later on, so. Um, just not this month, or tour.
Do you have to hang up or figure what we stopped with Suzie?
Um, on the refinancing? No, I, I, no, I got too much other data up in there without looking. Well, we already, how many years ago did we do that? Four years ago at least, and we added, it was ten years. So we're getting, we're getting darn close to getting towards the end of that, which will help, cause that'll be more, more monies available to us for the maintenance. And the pumps and the replacements, pumps are not cheap, they're just not cheap, period. You know, it takes a, it takes a homeowner five, five and a half years to pay for one pump.
Well, where are you getting your pumps from?
Anywhere in the state of Michigan, if you can find them cheaper and they work as good as.
Well, if it takes five years to pay for it, I mean, something's.
That's the way it is. That's that type of system.
Maybe you'd like to take it over, cause we've been trying.
Yeah, I mean, it, we tried to find that.
Nothing new here.
Nope.
Yeah, Roger, they can't redo double the.
So, no, sit there and be too smart, well, I mean, five years to pay for the pump.
Yeah.
Some of their off-the-shelf pumps.
Yeah, I mean, that's the reality of it, and it's not just us, I mean, you, I, I've been working with the city of Oak, uh, um, Oakland. Um, down near Detroit, um, their, you know, their staff trying to figure out what they're doing, um, you know, what have they found? Have they used a different type of pump, have they found under the other pump vendors, you know, stratters? Um, you know, the parts inside the pumps that are giving Roger and Pete and the, and the crew over there some issues. Um, Roger has taken the initiative to save us money by going and getting, uh, stainless steel, um, shut-off valves made up that he had to have fabricated. I mean, we're trying, they have done a really good job and I'm gonna give them kudos for it, because they've maintained the system on the same original set of pumps for the last twenty-eight years. Right? So that's a long-lasting pump, if you ask me. Now, the thing is, is it cost us millions of dollars to put the system in. So, you know, that's been the bond that we had been paying for, we got that refinance, brought that interest rate down, we've done. Everything we can do there to save as much money as possible for every homeowner in this community as well. So the board has really been active in trying to keep your costs down to a, the, the barest of minimums.
There isn't no kind of grants you can get for stuff like that?
They like to do managing grants for financing, but it's one of those, right? You, if you need to borrow money, we might help you out and give you some money towards that. Um, I've already investigated that with rural development, because it's gonna be, it may be an issue, right? So we gotta find out about that, and it does have to do with, um, you know, they have a big mathematical formula like everything else. But the bottom line is, they might be able to do that, but they're gonna look at per capita income, you know, is it ten, is what we're charging in the ten percent rule. Uh, what the normal homeowner within this district makes for an annual income. Um, they would have to have an engineering staff come out and do an evaluation, uh, there's a lot of stuff that is going to go into that. Um, for us to, you know, be able to get even a loan to help us with replacing pumps. So I'm trying to accumulate as much information as I can before we make a big presentation to the board and/or meet as a committee. Um, try to come up with the solutions, me and Pete have been working together, um, you know, Roger's skillset from doing it for how many years? The whole entire time until he decided that he's trying to retire, um, you know.
He ain't gonna retire.
We're still gonna pick his brain, but his son is truly taking over, so we're trying to work with Pete. Um, it's just, it, it's a big, it's huge, right? It's huge, it's really huge for a community of this size, when you only have two hundred and seventy-two people supporting this type of system. Um, it's, it's huge, so I get that, and I don't wanna, I don't, I'm a taxpayer too, right? I don't want anybody, and I paid sewer for years, I paid the connection fees and the whole nine yards. But the thing is, is I don't wanna have anybody having to pay more than they have to, and that's what I'm trying to accomplish, that's what Pete is trying to accomplish, that's what Roger's skillset has been trying to accomplish. Uh, that's why we refinance things, we're trying our very, very best to keep everybody's costs down to a manageable amount. Um, but the reality is, is when a pump costs you five and a half years worth of solid payments, every single time I send out a bill, and as you just heard. I just turned thirty thousand dollars over to the county for unpaid sewer. Right? That had to go as an assessment against people's property taxes, now granted, some people choose to pay it that way. They do that on purpose, um, that's fine, we make an extra twenty bucks off them every year because of late fees, but. There's other people in there that actually can genuinely, senior citizens. Some of them may be struggling, families that have lost their jobs, whatever the case may be, there is some people in there that financially are struggling to make those payments already. So, um, but it has to be a lien against the property, because you have to have a sewer system per the DEQ. You cannot just randomly throw your sewage in wherever you want to. So. Buckets are not acceptable, and I'm pretty sure that the county doesn't allow warehouses anymore, but. Um, there's more to come on that, but it, you know, I'm glad the subject came up, because there's a lot of background information and a lot of background running right now going into this. Trying to figure out what we can do before we present it to the board and then, you know, obviously to the public. So that's my update on that.
That's it, anything else? Anybody got anything else? Not, but he wants to adjourn. Anybody opposed to that?